It's time to wake up. 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 Woo! At the break of dawn and it's on again, ready to get ready to climb back on the land. Come on, man, shake the dust off the floor. Don't yawn and prolong what you got to do. And if you've been going through any negative phase, boy, here's your opportunity for turning a page. Today's a new chapter. Write your plot and make it end with the wind. Give it all you got. First, you gotta rise with alert in your mind. Get the dirt from your eyes and work on the work. It is done, 'cause we've been trying to prove it. Let's go, man. It's news, it's time to wake up. 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 Tick tock, tick tock, tick tock. Let's go. Tick tock, tick tock, tick tock. You can't wait around for someone to prove it. Now is the moment to begin your renewal, man. Feel alive with the vibe energized of the folks who you're coming by the white in your eyes. Hey, another day might waste away. Come on, let's get it going, don't make the delay. So bring me along and lift you on high like Georgia, where you're the piece of the pie. Begin it with the step, you'll get in it in the sack. You'll be winning like you never did it when your office sucks. So write this minute, get right with it. What time is it? It's time to wake up.
Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the city council. Today is Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. This morning, our invocation will be led by Reverend Darrell Cunningham, Senior, pastor of New Birth Missionary Baptist Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Clinton Woods, if he's available. And, okay. Or Counselor Smitherman, if she's willing. She's willing. So if you're willing and able, please stand for the invocation.
Good morning to the council, to the mayor's staff, to the citizens, visiting friends. Let us pray. Gracious Father, we're so thankful today for allowing us to come on such a momentous occasion that will allow us to make decisions that affect the lives of everyone in our communities. Give us power, give us grace, give us a strong presence that we'll be able to make those decisions that would be great for us. And we ask Heavenly Father that you bless the families who have been victimized in different ways and we know that you are still in control. We pray for those families, other ones who've lost loved ones or are victims of crime, and we pray for those who are committing those crimes. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for a positive resolution that will keep our city moving in a positive light. I ask you this morning to empower every lawmaker, every person that represents us in this fashion. Give them the strength, give them the courage, and give them the decision-making power to make our city great. For it's in your mighty name we pray this prayer to you, my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen, amen, and amen.
Mr. Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Morning, sir. Councilmember Smitherman. Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Good morning. Councilmember Woods. Council President Protem Alexander.
Good morning, present.
Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right. The council, the minutes are not ready for the July 2nd, 2024 through August 13th, 2024 meetings. This time, we'll have communications from the mayor's office. Chief?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Madam Protem. Good morning to all the members of the council and good morning to the members of the public, all those under the sound of my voice. Few brief notes on the mayor's behalf. First of all, the Stop the Violence Classic. Parker High School's Thundering Herd and the Ramsey-Ibe High School Rams will face off on this Thursday, August 22nd, during the second annual Stop the Violence Classic at the historic Legion Field. This is a partnership with the Birmingham City Schools, the City of Birmingham, and local organizations to bring about awareness of resources to reduce violence in our community. The pregame begins at 6:00 PM and kickoff is set for 7:00 PM. For details, please go to bhamsityschools.org. Food Truck Friday, please come out this Food Truck Friday on August 23rd from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM in front of Birmingham City Hall. Everyone can come and enjoy dishes from some of your favorite food trucks and also learn more about voter registration and our city's land bank program. Our new business tax and license system, really important note, everyone, as the City of Birmingham continues to strengthen its systems of engagement with local businesses, the Tax and License Division is introducing a new, more user-friendly online experience. Businesses already registered within the city's tax and license system are encouraged to enroll in the new network by Friday, September 6th, in order to conduct all future tax and license transactions online. The online registration system is not currently available to new businesses. Individuals seeking to secure a new business license must still come to City Hall. Tax and License Division staff will provide in-person support for registration in the lobby of City Hall. Questions about the new system can be emailed to bhamlssupport@birminghamal.gov. It's the time for Strong Her applications again. Saturday, August 31st is the deadline to submit new nominations for the Strong Her campaign. As a reminder, Strong Her highlights women who live, work, and/or volunteer, or attend school in the Magic City and are working to make a difference. Honorrees will be announced in March, be announced March 25th on the city's social media pages as a part of Women History Month. For more information, please go to www.birminghamal.gov/strongher. And finally, it's time again to sign up for ACE. The Academy of Civic Engagement, or ACE as we refer to it, will kick off on Thursday, September 5th, at 5:30 PM at the Battlewood Auditorium. ACE is a citywide leadership initiative aimed at bringing everyday residents together for a deeper understanding of how the city is working for them and how they can plug into a variety of opportunities. To apply, we encourage everyone to go to www.birminghamal.gov/ACE. Mr. President, Madam Protem, members of the council, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the council? Counselor Moore?
Yes, sir. I did want to just say thank you for sharing the news about the new business tax and license system that's being put in place. That email, if people had questions about how to get enrolled or how to participate?
Yes, sir. It's bhamlssupport@birminghamal.gov. Again, it's bhamlssupport@birminghamal.gov.
Thank you.
Yeah. Counselor Williams?
Thank you. Chief, and Camila, thank you for the email this morning about the recycling cart program. I just had some, a couple of questions about that. If, first of all, if, are we, I think there's five, I think I believe there was 5,000 initial carts, right? Are we close to getting that number enrolled?
Mr. President? So right now, we're, the first delivery was about 1,800. And so, give us a couple more weeks while we get the second batch in. So we want to fill the first request first, as we get the, more and more come in, we'll continue to fill those requests.
Okay. Well, I'll just stay in communication with you about that, because I've had a lot of people reach out and then they have questions about existing recycling bin, like, a lot of stuff that I just don't. But we'll stay in touch, thank you.
And just, you can share with Camila Center about the FAQ also.
Okay, thank you.
Protem Alexander?
Yes, thank you. Chief, did you say the first cycle has gone out or that has finished? What did you say?
The first batch of recyclers are in. I think they're scheduled to go out on the 18th of August, not 17th. So we're working to fill those requests and then we'll do the back order when, once we fill those first requests.
Perfect, because I'm just having, same thing, residents are calling, they're seeing some being delivered and maybe a house next to them or on the same street. And so, they were just wondering how those were being distributed. So appreciate, also received some information from Miss Temple. So thank you all for the clarity, appreciate it.
Counselor Smitherman?
I was just wondering, because you know, I did the application for my mom, so I was like, where's, where's our recycling cart? But no, seriously, I, I, hopefully, can we do, I know it's expensive. If we could do a mailer teaching people what to put in their recycling bin, I think that would be really helpful in some of the questions, because even my dad, he doesn't care if I tell y'all, he was asking me all these questions, like, what can I put in there, da, da, da. And I think that'll help out a lot, because otherwise, from what Counselor Abbott has taught us, that if we don't do it rightly, then it's going to get contaminated and then that defeats the purpose of having a recycling cart as well.
Yeah, so Counselor Smitherman, our comms team is working. I'll follow up on a direct mailer, if that's a part of the communications plan, but I know they're working on an aggressive education campaign to make sure, so I'll make sure they include that as a part of the consideration, man.
Okay, thank you, because a lot of us have elderly residents who aren't, you know, technologically savvy, and so I don't want them to miss out on any information. Even if they don't give recycling cart, it just makes it easier. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Clark?
Along this, thank you, Mr. President. Along the same lines, does the, does signing up for a cart opt you in to have, you know, them come by your house every time? Or what we still need, because I don't, I don't fill mine up every time, so there won't, it won't be a way to indicate that I'm ready for a pickup?
No, it would be just like the trash pickup. Yes, if you opt in, they will come back.
So if you get a bin, you have opted in? Okay, thank you.
Since we're talking about recycling, you know, I think there's some folks who fill in the gaps with their, their own thoughts when they don't have, you know, information from elsewhere. And so, as part of the rollout of, you know, this new program, heard some concerns about folks about the use of our waste collection trucks for recycling purposes. So in my communications with DPW in the past, it's been my understanding that Tuesday, after all of the garbage collection is done, that the trucks are actually washed down. So they're, they're actually cleaned out before they do any recycling collection on Wednesday. So, you know, all of the garbage contamination doesn't cross over into the recycling collection. And I just wanted to verify that that is indeed the case.
So, Council President, like, actually, with the grant that we received from ADM allows to purchase a recycling, two recycling trucks, so we have a dedicated truck just for recycling.
Okay. In the past, though, we have been using-
That wasn't in the past, but yeah, we tried to correct that with the grant that we received from ADM, so we wouldn't have to have that issue anymore.
Okay, thank you. Good information, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Mitchell.
Counselor Abbott?
One, one comment about the information that's been put out regarding what to recycle and how to do it. We've sent out conflicting information. What's on our website isn't the same as what we have published. So if we can just get our story straight, you know, make sure that we're saying the same thing everywhere, instead of different things in different places.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I don't want to have to explain, but if you go look at everything we've put out about the recycling and the new carts, you'll see that it doesn't all match.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. We covered everybody. Mr. Clerk, do we have any nominations to boards and agencies?
We do not receive any.
Okay. This time, I'll read our statement on conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the items, item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Do any members of the council wish to, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, could we please read through our consent agenda?
Okay, consent agenda for today starts on page two. With items one, two, three, and four. Page three, we have items five, six, seven, and eight on consent. Page four, we have items nine, 10, 11, and 12 on consent. Page five, we have items 13, 14, 15, and 16 on consent. Page six, items 17, 18, and 19 are on consent. Page seven, item number 20 is on consent. Page eight, items 23, 24, and 25 are on consent. Please note that items 24, well, item 24 was recommended by Budget and Finance, and item 25 was recommended by Public Safety. Page nine, item 26, 27, and 28 are on consent items. Item number 26 was recommended by Budget and Finance as well. Page 10, items 29, 30, 31, and 32 are on consent. Please note that item 29 is recommended by Public Safety. Page 11, items 33, 34, 35, 36, and 37 are on consent. Item number 33 was recommended by Budget and Finance. Page 12, items 38, 39, and 41 are on consent. Page 13, items 42, 43, and 44 are on consent. Page 14, items 45, 46, 47, and 48 are on consent. Page 15, items 49, 50, 51, 52, and 53 are on consent. And we conclude with items 54 and 56 on page 16.
Okay. So I will kick us off by asking that we remove on page seven, item 20 from consent. On page eight, items 24 and 25. And on page nine, item 27. That's all I have. Do any members of the, Counselor Smitherman?
Can we remove item 18?
18. That is page six, item 18.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Abbott?
I don't want to take anything off of consent, but I just wanted to ask if the items that are on page eight, like the Symphony, the Jones Valley Teaching Farm, the National Veterans Day, and the Red Mountain Theater, and the Ballet, are those all the same dollar amounts from the 2024 budget?
That's correct. These are just the renewals of those same agreements.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President? Just want to note on the consent agenda, item 41, it should be District 1 added. It's funding to put item 41 as well on page 12. Item 41. Is it one or four?
District four, I apologize.
Okay.
Okay. And so, the funding amount remain the same?
Funding amount?
Yes, it just needs to be updated as for District four. April 5th.
Okay, all right. Any other items? Counselor Williams?
Can we take off item 39 on page 12, please?
Okay. What number, I'm sorry? 39, page 12. Mr. Clerk, I made a mistake. If there's no objections, item 27 can go back on consent. That's page nine. Okay. All right. Okay, at this time, we have several items that are public hearing items. So at this time, if any members of the public wish to remove any of those items marked public hearing from the consent agenda, please let us know now. Seeing none, we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'm over approval.
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Smitherman and Counselor Williams? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, the consent agenda passes. Item, first item, please.
All right, one second. First item should be item number... 18. In ordinance to further amend the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025 by transferring $15,000 from Park and Recreation miscellaneous revenue to further amend the donations fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025 by appropriating $5,000 to Pratt City Park and $10,000 to Summer Camp Enrichment Program. Motion, please. I admit before you.
All right. There are questions or any discussion on this item? All right, if not, we're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And then one abstention.
That's Counselor Smitherman for the-
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Should be item number 20. In ordinance to further amend the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025 by transferring $256,379, signed $79.14 from General Fund miscellaneous clearing and appropriating $256,379.14 to non-departmental transfer to fund 103 Neighborhood Revitalization and to further amend the Neighborhood Revitalization Fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025 by appropriating $256,379.14 to Office of the City Attorney. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
I admit before you.
Yes, so I asked those, that this one be removed from consent. So in the ordinance, it refers from taking, moving funds out of the Neighborhood Revitalization Fund and going towards OCA opioid programs. So I just wanted to get some information on what those opioid programs are.
Thank you. As you're aware, we have the Drug Nuisance Abatement Team, and this is to facilitate training and technological needs, as well as additional attorneys and support staff related to this, so that we can continue to bring more cases into court.
Okay. Counselor Clark?
I just wanted to generally get a sense of, I know we authorized the mayor to sign a settlement agreement, and I was told that we would get some details on, you know, how the funds will be, you know, I guess, a total look at how the funds will be used. When will we get that?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think it was noted that we would share a in-depth memo with the council in detail of how the opioid funds can be used at the next retreat, so we can have an in-depth discussion on how the opioid funds can be used.
But we're using them.
This is just designating for future use, that has, it still has to come back to the council if it needs to be approved.
Okay.
This is just setting up the funds.
But we've, we've authorized an agreement that we didn't get to read, and now we're allocating funds, but we don't have a sense of the overall strategy. So it's just concerning, and I don't know when the next retreat is, do you?
I think that's a council decision, we're just invited.
Yeah, so we, we-
Okay, I know we're trying to schedule something, but it didn't say that-
Right.
It wasn't, we weren't sure the mayor would be included in that, so.
Right. So, Chief Mitchell, we've communicated with Government Affairs to request the mayor's office availability in September, and we, I think we have a couple of dates that we're working with.
We'll make sure, and staff will be available. So we'll follow back up with the mayor and the Government Affairs in the report back to the council.
All right, thank you. Counselor Abbott?
So, the reason that we're taking this money from the general fund miscellaneous clearing is because we haven't received the opiate settlement yet? Because we're not really using any opiate settlement money. We're taking money from miscellaneous clearing?
No, Counselor, Mr. President? Sir, so the item before the council is actually, we have receipt of the check for this actual settlement. So we received the fund in the general fund, and we transferred it to the Neighborhood Allocation Fund, so that money can actually roll over every year as the OCA sees fit to use the funds and the council sees fit. Because if it stayed in the general fund, it will lapse and stay in the general fund and the fund balance to June 30th. So we want to remove it from that account and put it in a account that rolls over every year.
Okay, so miscellaneous clearing is the neighborhood account?
Miscellaneous clearing is just a revenue account that we collect all of our checks, basically. We receive the check, we ask the council, can we receive the check and can we spend the check?
So, Chief Mitchell, usually when we receive settlement funds, there's a item on the agenda approving receipt of those. So was this preceded by, you know, forgive me for not remembering, but was this preceded by one of those?
Yes, so, and I'll tag team with it with Madam State Attorney, so I think the council has approved at least three resolutions where we were awarded settlement from three different other companies. This is just one of the checks that's actually came in. So we're just receiving the funds and asking that the funds be transferred to account for us to be able to spend it. It's no different than the item that was for the donation for those two parts. We received the check, and we asking the council to put it into account for us to spend it.
And counsel, if you recall that I shared with you all the memo and how those funds can be expended, and the settlement agreement was all shared with each of you.
Yeah, we may need that information reset to us.
I can do that today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Counselor Clark?
This is a little related, but does anyone keep up with the opioid deaths? I know the coroner's office does, but opioid-related death toll and, is there a handy way to get that information?
The Jefferson County Department of Health has provided us with that information, and that was approximately about a year ago. I can request to get an updated list.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item is approved. Next item, please.
Should be item 21. An ordinance pursuant to Alabama Act Number 1969-916, authorize the mayor to execute interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Birmingham and the Birmingham Board of Education for the sharing of strategic video assets by the board, including school surveillance cameras located in public areas. The Birmingham Police Department determines agreements should not exceed three years. This is an item of permanent operation, I need UC to entertain it today.
Listen for UC.
Second.
Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Member Clark? Counselor Member Moore? Counselor Member Smitherman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate? Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Motion on the item, please.
Second.
Items before you.
All right. Any discussion on this item? I do have one question. So the summary on the agenda mentions the funding source as BPD operating budget. However, just right reading over the agreement, this is just a formalization of, you know, giving the police department access to Board of Education cameras on BOE property, is that correct? There's no actual- There's no actual exchange of funds?
Yeah, there's no, that was a misprint. It's, it's no funding source needed, it's just allowing access for BPD to use the cameras at the schools.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Counselor Williams?
I tried to read the contract that was attached, but could not, because it was not legible. But in any event, is this going to be going back to the Real-Time Crime Center?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I assume this is akin to our connect program, but because it's Board of Education, we have to have a...
That's correct.
...a legal agreement?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item twenty-two, an ordinance pursuant to the Alabama Act 1969-916, authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Birmingham and the United States Attorney's Office, District of Columbia, and the Metropolitan Police Department of Washington, D.C., for the City of Birmingham to provide up to forty uniform Birmingham police officers to be sworn in as deputy U.S. Marshals for the Presidential Inauguration Task Force in Washington, D.C. area from January the 17th, 2025 to January the 21st, 2025. Again, this is an item of permanent operation, I need UC to pass today.
Move the UC.
Second.
Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Member Clark? Counselor Member Moore? Counselor Member Smithman? Counselor Member Tate? Counselor Member Williams? Counselor President Pro Tim Alexander? Counselor President O'Quinn?
All right.
Motion on the item, please. Item before you.
All right. Counselor Abbott?
I just have one question, and that is, if we're short three hundred police officers and having a hard time finding any, why would we send forty of hours out of town and away from the city of Birmingham so that we'd have a shortage of three hundred and fifty instead of three hundred?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
The resolution that's before the council really just speaks to up to, so we don't foresee that we have to possibly send a whole amount of forty. That's why we added the up to language. We could send five.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. Who pays for the flights to take them to Washington? And all their expenses?
That would be up to the city to pay that and would be reimbursed by the United States Attorney's Office in Washington, D.C. and the Metro Police Department for D.C.
That's good to know. Thank you. I'm just concerned because we, you know, we have this problem with the police department of not having enough people, and it just bothered me to see that we were going to send up to forty of them out of town. For how long? A few days or one day or...
Mr. President? So Counselor Abbott, typically when we have these interlocal agreements, Chief Mitchell noted this, it's up to that amount, but we always use what's going on in the city at the time as a way to gauge how many. So this won't be made in a vacuum. The decision on the number won't be made in a vacuum. It will be based on both availability and need.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Williams?
I was just gonna say, I hope that we're very intentional about what officers we send up. You know, I think one thing that we were, we learned, and initially I actually had the exact same thoughts as my colleague, Ms. Abbott, but I think one thing that we learned from the World Games is that the more experience our officers can get working with other agencies, especially agencies outside of the Jefferson County footprint, the more prepared that we get to continue to host large-scale events. So while I had the same initial concerns, I actually thought about everything that we learned from having CBD, Board Patrol, we had all of the alphabet boys, TAC units down there with our TAC units, which is something that we really have not had in this city before. And so I want our officers, the ones that are most appropriate, to get the, the experience and knowledge of seeing how our federal partners put on such a large-scale national security event. And so I hope that we're very intentional about who we send, and I do see a lot of value in making sure that we participate in this. And also, we want that federal money to keep rolling in, so. But anyway, that's just my two cents. I hope that chiefs, that we're intentional about who we send up.
All right. We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
That item is approved. Item twenty-four, please.
Yes. Twenty-four. A resolution in accordance with Section 11-40-1 and 11-47-16, Code of Alabama, 1975, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Jones Valley Teaching Farm, wherein Jones Valley Teaching Farm will implement aggressive programs of sustainable urban agriculture, promoting food markets and economic development potential for the city. And for said services, the city shall pay Jones Valley Teaching Farm and Mountain Act to receive $50,000 for a term of one year. Motion, please.
Move the item. Second.
Item before you.
Any discussion on this item? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Ms. Clark, please note my abstention.
Your abstention, only one second here. All right, got it.
All right, that item is approved. Item twenty-five?
Item twenty-five. Item twenty-five. A resolution pursuant to Section 11-40-1, 11-43-55, Code of Alabama, 1975, authorize the mayor to execute an amendment, number one, three-year vendor agreement entered into on January 29th, 2024, with Live View Technologies for, Live View Technologies to provide the city police department with two D3 live units for a total of $207,484.24. This amendment, number one, adds three additional D3 live units to the city, which includes, but is not limited to, one, two subscriptions, smart generator, two, two mobile mount solar generators, three setup, and four shipping for additional cost of $250,705.29, and authorize the mayor to spend up to an additional $10,000 a year to cover relocation and data expenses. The total amount to expense should not exceed $488,185.53. Motion, please.
Move the item. Second.
Item before you.
All right. So I had to ask that this be removed from consent, because I have a question. Live View in their marketing materials really has positioned this unit, or at least in their marketing materials, they tout this as a security solution for big-box retailers. And I just wanted to get clarification on how these were intended to be used and get some assurance that they are not going to be used on, you know, private property and the type of application that Live View, you know, sort of markets this for.
We need to follow up with BPD on that, Counselor, so.
Okay.
Table this item, we'll come back to it.
All right, so motion to table this until we can get a response.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, next item, please.
Should be going to item thirty-nine. Item thirty-nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor or his authorized representative to settle all claims and cause of action in and from the case style of City of Birmingham versus Train U.S. Incorporated and others, O1CV 2022 900 929.00, for the payment of cash sums and free services by Train to the City of Birmingham in full, and final mutual release of all claims. Darian, motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That item is approved. Item forty, please.
One second, please. Item forty. I don't have on the screen. A resolution confirming the appointment of four members to the Birmingham Airport Authority Board of Directors as nominated by the mayor for terms expiring July the 29th, 2030.
Okay. Mr. President?
Chief?
Before the council, we have four appointments, two reappointments. We have Darlene Wilson, who will be reappointed with a term that will expire on July 29th, 2030, and David Germany, with term will expire July 29th, 2030. And we have the new appointments of Valerie Thompson, replacing Bobby Knight, with said term to expire on July 29th, 2030, and Dale Davis, replacing Bill Smith, with term that will expire on July 29th, 2030.
Seeing discussion on this item? All right, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item is approved.
Item fifty-five?
Item fifty-five?
Item fifty-five, on page sixteen. A resolution setting a public show call hearing September the 10th, 2024, to consider the matter of revoking the business license issued to Quest Club Incorporated, 416, 24th Street South, Birmingham, Alabama, 35233, and to consider rescinding Resolution Number 621-83, approved on April the 5th, 1983, granting approval for a club liquor class two license, and Resolution Number 651-83, approved on April the 12th, 1983, granting approval for Division One Dance Permit. Motion, please.
Second.
Item before you.
We're ready for the vote.
Who seconded, I'm sorry?
It wasn't me.
Yeah, it was me.
Okay.
Actually, I do, actually, I do, nevermind.
Counselor Smith?
No, nevermind.
Okay.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item is approved. I believe that brings us back to item twenty-one. No, I'm sorry. Item twenty-five, so motion to take back up item twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item is back before you, and the motion is already on the table for approval.
All right.
Yes, sir. So Counselor, can you restate your question again?
Yes, so if you go to the Live View Technologies website, they've got a video there available where they're talking about this D3 live unit, and it's really touted as a security solution for, you know, big-box retailers, you know, to be used in parking lots to prevent theft and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to get some more insight on how BPD intends to use this, and, you know, in the context of seeing Live View's marketing materials, I want to be sure that we're not essentially providing a subsidy to retailers by, you know, putting our units on private property. So I feel like, you know, that's, that's something, a, you know, something that the private sector should be taking on.
So it's really, I'll start per Chief Thurmond, and he's available to answer if needed. We are already using these, we already have them. These are just additional ones, and it's really more for problem areas as opposed to the private retailer. So, but again, we're already using them now. So it's not meant to provide private security or private technology for those, those individual retailers. It's really more the areas that they've seen. We need a little bit more intentional viewing of those areas. And if you have questions beyond that, he can speak to that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, so on this, how many of these units do we have currently deployed and how many? I'm confused by these different dollar amounts in the agreement. How many do we have deployed and how many are we adding?
I think you said we have two, and so we're doing three additional ones.
So, okay, so we'll have five.
Total of five, right.
Gotcha. And the two we currently have are currently utilized?
Yes.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
So just one additional question. What's, what's the term of the contract for these?
What was the question, Counsel?
What's the term of the agreement?
Oh, this is a three-year, three-year contract. The original contract was three years. This is an amendment to add three units for the remainder of that three-year term.
Okay. Counselor Williams?
One more question. It looks like that there's $10,000 a year to cover relocation and data expenses, so is that really data or are we actually paying Live View to relocate these units?
Yeah, that's an operational function, and if we have to reprogram the unit for change of location, there's a cost involved. But I, I don't know that we're using that service, but it is part of their agreement. So that was added to the not-to-exceed amount.
Huh, okay. What kind of programming needs to be done when you relocate it?
I don't know the answer to that, Counsel.
The reason that I'm asking is because the sheriff's office has been using these for a long time now, and it's not this brand, it's a different brand in that seem, A, they're significantly cheaper than this, but B, the expense is all within the manpower to move. There's not a relocate, there's not a reprogramming. So we have to reprogram, is that the word that you used?
That, that's my understanding of what the cost is for. I don't know when and, and why it needs to be reprogrammed, but there are times, according to the contract, when that will happen, and they, they have a fee for that.
All right, any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Are there any additional items, Ms. Clark?
Yes, sir.
All right, that brings us to our district announcements. Counselor Clark, are you ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've got, in District Eight, we've got the Graymont Neighborhood meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, at 4:30 PM in the Smithville Library. Also, our Habitat build in Rising West Princeton is coming along nicely. It's a partnership between Community Development and Habitat, using ARPA funds to do a total of eight new builds. Six are out of the ground, looking really good. This is part of an effort to stabilize the area between Princeton Elementary and Rickwood Field, because a lot of that neighborhood is pretty stable, but around the school is particularly unstable, and so we want to do our part to help, help stabilize more that neighborhood. And those houses can be, if you're interested in buying a house, possibly you have young children that you'd like to send to Princeton Elementary, you can contact habitatbirmingham.org. There's still time to get into their program at this point. Congratulations to Arlington Annabellum Home and Gardens for being chosen as a site for the 2025 Jefferson County Master Gardeners Association Project. This partnership will fuel the Harmony and Heritage Community Resource Garden that will be created with, to contain at least eighteen garden beds with a... with a variety of berries and trees for community nourishment. Sloss Furnaces Historic Landmark is getting ready for its fall festival season by investing in the development of the North Field. Please check their website at W W W dot slossfurnaces dot O R G to see upcoming events and plan your visit. Finally, if you're looking for a fun way to get active and meet your neighbors, you can join us every Thursday morning, weather permitting, at eight A M. for a walk around the Crossplex. Uh, I think it's going to be cool enough Thursday morning at eight for us to walk around the Crossplex instead of, um, the High Orline, so come and join us for a shady stroll, um, hopefully, and start the day with some active movement and good conversation. Thank you, that concludes my remarks.
Alright, thank you, Counsel Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, the South Woodline Neighborhood Association will take place tonight at the Woodline Library, uh, at six P M. We will also have the Community Development Committee meeting, uh, that will take place today at two P M. Uh, in Council Chambers. The Park and Recreation Board will meet tomorrow at Legion Field at nine A M. Um, the Collar Green Cookoff, uh, District Four will be having a Collar Green Cookoff this Saturday in Kingston, uh, will take place at the Kingston Teaching Farm, forty six hundred Eighth Court North, Birmingham, Alabama, um, from ten A M. to three P M., we'll have all kinds of stuff. Um, uh, let me see, we'll have eight contestants that will be participating. Um, we'll have field day activities, bouncy houses, dunk tank, I'll actually be jumping in the dunk tank, so if you got any frustrations, uh, yeah, handle your business. Live music, uh, food and drinks, lemonade trucks, all kinds of cool stuff, so y'all make sure y'all come out and have a good time. Uh, and then lastly, I wanted to give a shout out to, uh, Mitchell's Place. Um, this past Saturday, they had, um, a really cool event out at East Lake Park, uh, the Dragon Boat Race and Festival. Um, from what I understand, it's been something that has taken place, you know, several years, um, but this is the first time that I actually had an opportunity to go out and, um, and see it. And so, they had these long boats that they were, you know, uh, racing and rowing. Uh, you had folks like U A B. and, uh, Brassville and Gory, and, um, who else? South State Bank. Several organizations or companies that, you know, had teams, um, that use this as a way to, you know, uh, do some team building, uh, but in, in, uh, as a fundraiser for Mitchell's Place. Uh, so just wanted to give a big shout out to them, uh, it was a really cool event, well attended, uh, and it was, it was really fun, so that's all I have.
Yes, sir, alright, thank you, Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm glad somebody else gets distracted up here. Uh, the next planning and zoning meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August twenty eighth, at three thirty P M. here in the Council Chambers. I cannot believe that August is going to be over, and, uh, like it just started yesterday. Um, tonight, we have the Five Point South Neighborhood Meeting at the Highlands United Methodist Church. They start at six o'clock P M. On Monday, August twenty sixth, the Crestwood South Neighborhood Association meets at the Levite Jewish Community Center at six thirty P M. Um, if you have any concerns or issues, please call three one one or download the My Behem three one one app and attach your photos. That is all for me, thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, okay, Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I want to start off by congratulating our Pro Tem for another successful Safe Summer Concert, I'm sorry they didn't make it, but it was pretty hot outside. But I was really happy to see you had a lot of people there, so thank you for kicking it off as well, so. And I saw, did you give him roses, the artist, or did he give you roses? Oh, you gave out ro- oh, you're doing it big time, you're setting up the standard right here. But, but congratulations to that, um, five, I know. Five Point South Neighborhood will meet in the South Hall of Highland United Methodist Church at six P M. today, and then Woodland Park Neighborhood will meet on Monday, September, ooh, Sep- August twenty sixth, at Woodland Park Church of Christ at six P M. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will be on Monday, September ninth, at three thirty P M. in the Council Chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, September fourth, by noon. Uh, we will be having our second Fraud Prevention Seminar at the Tethysville Library tomorrow at ten A M. Along with Sheriff Mark Petway, light refreshments will be provided. And then the Tethysville Library will host a Senior Fit Program sponsored by Navigate Communities, uh, at the library, and does every Friday at ten forty five A M. Um, and I do know Navigate does have, uh, seminars that they're offering as well. And then I really enjoy, uh, with Chief Sparts, going to the press conference for Self-Defense Classic. Um, it was really good, and y'all be really proud of the students, they spoke so well, and they were so inspiring, like I wa- I was really, really proud of them, but if you all can, it's on Thursday at Legion Field, please come support them. Um, you know, it, it really makes me sad to see that the way they've been dealing with grief and death. Um, Su- uh, Superintendent Sullivan told me they lost twenty students last year, and that's a lot. Yeah, that's a lot. So, um, hopefully, I was telling the students, well, I was telling the coaches, if we could do something with the kids, maybe just try extended pass at football game, I think that'd be, well, I think we know to have prayer, prayer walk around the schools, yeah, on Saturday, so I think our kids are becoming more active, so, um, hopefully that's a good attendance for that, so thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, Pro Tem Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President, these are announcements for District Seven. I do want to begin by requesting unanimous consent for a resolution of sympathy for the family of Mrs. Geraldine Bonner Pickens. Mrs. Pickens was a longtime resident of the Goldwire Neighborhood. She also served in various capacities as a neighborhood officer, so if I could get you see for resolution of sympathy.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And now the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, thank you very much, I know the family will appreciate this, uh, her funeral will be Wednesday, eleven A M. at Sixth Avenue Baptist Church. As far as announcements, um, thank you, Counselor Smith, for mentioning the beginning of our Safe Summer Series concerts that, uh, we held at Botanical Gardens on Sunday. It was very hot and very crowded, and so I do want to thank all of those, uh, residents, citizens of Birmingham who came out, enjoyed the music of Raheem Devon and Logan the Entertainer. Want to thank your Counselor Moore, uh, came out and took in some of the activities, and I enjoyed the music. And yes, ladies, he did give out roses, and, uh, it was just a very nice time. So again, we have more to come, you'll be hearing announcements about other, uh, parts of the Safe Summer Series coming out. So, again, we started this as part of COVID, and we wanted to get families out for a safe environment, and we're continuing this to get you out into various locations within the city of Birmingham. I want to thank those people that work behind the scenes that helped to make this a success, so thank you. Uh, as far as announcements now, uh, today, we have a neighborhood meeting coming up with the Green Acres Neighborhood, they'll meet at six thirty at Living Christ Worship Center. On Wednesday, we have bulk trash and brush pickup that's scheduled for Gracilla Heights and East Brownsville neighborhoods. On Thursday, the Garden Highland Neighborhood Association will meet at four P M. at Mount Hilliard Baptist Church. Industrial Center Neighborhood will meet at six P M. at Mary Door Center, and there's bulk trash and brush pickup scheduled for Roosevelt City. We have a lot of illegal dumping going on, and so I just hope that they'll be able to pick up most of those sites. We've really got some problems going on over there. Also, on Friday, there's bulk trash and brush pickup that's scheduled for Jermania Park South. On Monday, August twenty sixth, the Tarpley City Neighborhood Association will meet at six thirty in the Mary Door Center, and then there's bulk trash and brush pickup scheduled for Paddle. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President, Economic Development Tourism Committee will be meeting today at eleven thirty, uh, in the Council Chambers, if you're available, Ms. Clark, you would create a, uh, quarrel. Uh, Crescenton Neighborhood Meeting will be Thursday, August the twenty second, at six o'clock at Hope Church. Southeast Lake Neighborhood Meeting, uh, will be August the twenty second, at six P M. at East Lake United Methodist Church, and Crestwood South will be at the Jewish Community Center, which Ms. Abbott already mentioned, the twenty sixth, at six thirty. Also, wanted to shout out, uh, Counsel Moore for, um, uh, attending the, uh, the Mitchell's Boat Race at East Lake Park, that's something that we help set up and fund every year, and I know that's something that is, you know, one thing that we've got to do is keep finding different things to do at our parks so that they're utilized. When I go to other cities and see all of the events that they're having at their parks, um, it, uh, it makes me yearn for more, more things like what you put on this weekend, and more things like the boat racing and the fishing rodeo, and I think that the more things that we can have to do as a community, um, that are constructive and safe, the, the better and stronger our community will be. So I'm happy that that event has, has kind of taken off since we helped get it together, but anyway, uh, congratulations on your event, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Williams, Counsel Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President, yeah, Madam Pro Tem, you had a great turnout. And I did see the Mitchell, um, Boat Race on, on the news, it was really fun and exciting. Um, my announcement, Mr. President, is that East Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six P M. And that's on conference call, you can dial in at seven seven six nine eight two three seven oh, three seven seven oh, the pass code is three five two oh four. Sandusky Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight, six P M., and they also will meet on conference call, and you can ca- dial in by calling three one nine five two seven nine six four two. And the Smithfield Estates Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at the Daniel Payne Plaza, and that's located at sixteen hundred Daniel Payne Drive, and it's at six P M. tonight. South Pret neighborhood meeting will be held tonight at Lively Hope Baptist Church in nine oh five Court T. Um, and that's three five two one four, and that's at six P M. as well. Uh, Public Safety Meeting is canceled for Tuesday, August the twenty seventh, so just submit your items to Gregory dot Stanley, um, no later than, what's next Wednesday's date? Twenty eighth, the twenty eighth, no later than, um, twelve noon, so just submit your items, or you can call the office at two five four twenty three oh two if you have any questions. And that concludes my announcements, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Tate. For District Five, the Central City Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six P M. at the Downtown Central Library. Southeast Lake Neighborhood Association will meet next Monday, August twenty sixth, at six P M. at East Lake U M C. Um, in place of our regularly scheduled Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting on Monday, we'll have a, um, conversation that we do on a quarterly basis called Intersection. Um, and this time, we're going to be discussing, um, universal design, ADA compliance, and just general walkability, and, um, we typically invite, um, people who represent various, um, sectors of the transportation community. Um, in this case, we'll be having some folks from, uh, city planning, um, background, and, um, we've invited our folks from our Planning, Engineering, and Permits Department to be part of the conversation, so no official city business, just really a learning opportunity and, uh, folks, uh, an opportunity for folks to connect. Um, did want to announce that, uh, there is currently a vacancy on the Jefferson County Transit Authority Board, um, due to res- resignation of one of the members, so, um, we are now taking applications for persons who may be interested in being appointed to fill that vacancy. Please email your resume and a letter of interest to Kimberly Phillips at Kimberly dot Phillips at Birmingham A L dot gov by Friday, September twentieth, twenty twenty four. You can also contact my office at two oh five two five four two six seven nine if you need any additional, uh, information. Um, please note that, um, the only qualification by state statute, uh, required to serve on, on that, um, Transit Authority is, uh, that you be an elector of the, of Jefferson County, um, so, I E., you have to live in the county. Um, historically, um, the city of Birmingham has, um, also selected people who not only live in the county, but live in the city of Birmingham, so, um, but the only official requirement is that you live in the county, so, anyway, all others need not apply, that's the point. Also, uh, as we've been an- announcing, um, two really great events coming up, uh, this, this weekend. Uh, Sidewalk Film Festival and the Taith, Taste of Fourth Avenue Jazz Festival. Um, the Taste of Fourth Avenue Jazz Festival will take place on Saturday, August twenty fourth, starting at two P M. and running until ten P M. Admission is free and open to the public. Uh, some portable chairs and small coolers are permitted. For additional information, please visit W W W dot fourth avenue jazz dot org. Also, the Sidewalk Film Festival, uh, the twenty sixth edition, uh, presented by Regions Bank will be August, it actually started yesterday, um, August nineteenth, and runs through the twenty fifth in downtown Birmingham's Historic Theater District. Uh, tickets can be pur- purchased at W W W dot sidewalkfest dot com. And finally, just want to remind folks that we have two great, uh, farmers markets that take place every Saturday here in, in Birmingham. The East Lake Farmers Market, uh, takes place every Saturday, eight A M. to noon at East Lake U M C, until the second Saturday of October, and the Pepper Place Farmers Market is every Saturday, rain or shine, seven A M. until noon, located at twenty eight, twenty nine, Second Avenue South until December fourteenth. And that concludes my announcements. Counsel Clark.
I just wanted to note from, um, this is from W B R C., and it's a May report from the Coroner's Office. It says that four hundred ninety-four people died by overdose in Jefferson County in twenty twenty-three, and that's a nine percent increase from twenty twenty-two, and the fifth year in a row, overdose deaths have continued to climb, and it's, you know, outpacing homicides, and I don't know what the Birmingham number would be, but also of the four hundred ninety-four people, three hundred eighty-six were fentanyl related. So I just wanted to put that out there as we think about opioid settlement money and the real issue we're having with deaths in our community, and it's just kind of quiet, under the radar, I think, so.
Okay, Counsel Moore, you also had something additional?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President, uh, wanted to just pose this to the Chief of Staff. Um, I wanted to request for a no dumping sign to be placed on the corner of Twenty Ninth Avenue and Thirty Third Street, um, over in the Collegeville Neighborhood, uh, it was reported that they had one, but it was, it's now gone. And so they wanted to have a metal sign put in place.
Keep the address again, Counsel.
Uh, so it's on the corner of twenty, Twenty Ninth Avenue and Thirty Third Street.
Yes, sir.
Twenty Ninth Avenue and Thirty Third Street, thank you.
Okay. Alright, at this time, uh, we'll hear from our public speakers, Mr. Clark. Tony Griffin.
Good morning, as you approach the mic, please remember to state your name and address, and please note that to your time, uh, you'll have three minutes, so it'll be on the monitor.
Alright, good morning, good morning, uh, my name is Tony Griffin. I am, uh, I have a business that I've started here in Birmingham, so I wanted to just come and talk to you guys and let you know that you guys are invited. So, we, um, actually purchased a franchise out of California, and we're going to actually put two more locations in and around Birmingham. Uh, we do have our grand opening this weekend, August twenty fourth, and I just wanted to come and personally invite you guys, it's from twelve to eight. Uh, we have a twelve, a twelve different cookies and a secret cookie that we make. Uh, we have ice cream sandwiches, and we also have We have ice cream sandwiches, and we also have keto cookies for those that are watching their sugar levels, okay? So I just wanted to come and just invite you guys. I'm so proud to bring this to Birmingham. I've loved the improvements that have been going on in Birmingham over the last few years, so I just wanted to make my contribution to the city. I do, I'm going to, I plan on hiring about 10 to 12 individuals in each one, so just wanted to invite you guys.
Could you restate the location?
Uh huh. The location is 815 Green Springs Highway, across from McDonald's. It's in the New Edge Center that they just opened. Okay?
And, and you said the next one is going to be in District Four somewhere, right? [laughing]
I'm looking, I'm looking. I've got Black Global looking for me some locations, so I'm going to put up two more.
Got you. I got a couple that might be good.
Okay, okay. But it's a, it's a wonderful company. They are, they incorporate 80s, 90s music and graphics, and we're going to have a bouncy house and things for the kids, a graffiti wall that they can sign. We're also going to have some giveaways from Buffalo Rock has contributed some stuff for us to give away, and we'll also give away a lot of things, so just come out. And also, if you guys sign up for the rewards program, you can get the grand opening special, which is buy four cookies, get eight free. And that's for the first 50 people, though, but, okay? And they're, it's great variety of cookies. They're four-inch cookies, and they're delicious, so I hope that you guys will come.
Okay. And dates again?
Huh? Oh, it's Saturday, August 24th, from 12 to 8. And then dress again is 815 Green Springs Highway, Birmingham 35209, right across from McDonald's.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Next speaker, please.
Martina Jones.
Good morning. President O'Quinn, President Pro Tem, Alexander, city councilors. I am Martina Jones, familiar to most of you, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Wauhoma Youth Football Association, along with retired NFL player Marcel Darius and Casanova McKenzie. In March of 2015, Marcel donated $100,000 to the Wauhoma Youth Football Association. I've been here several times about that money. To date, nine years later, we can only appropriate that two items were purchased, a block and sled and some windscreen. This money was not to be used for capital improvements because we had capital improvement money. We can't get an accounting on where the remainder of that money is. So nine years later, we had a meeting on yesterday with Marcel Casanova, President O'Quinn, and the Park Board. Nobody could give us an answer. We don't know why we had the meeting because every question we asked was answered with, I just got in this position, I don't know. These players want to donate to our parks. They are stating that they will not give another dime to the city of Birmingham until this money is accounted for, nine years later. I realize that this is a park board issue, but this is also a city issue. The park board does not have money. All of the money comes through the city of Birmingham. And at this point, Marcel is at the point where he's going to have to take action to request discovery to find out where this money is. We were also told that the city would retain 40%, and only 60% would be spent for the park. That's not legal, so we need, we need answers. My second issue is, for over four years, we have requested bulb replacement on the football field. Initially, we only needed about four bulbs. Today, we need 25 bulbs. There are poles out there with one light. We got numerous answers yesterday about it. I've sent numerous emails. We know COVID came, so we gave it a little time after COVID. But here we are, we're not going to have a football season because we don't have any lights. We were given the excuse that we needed LED lights, but that wasn't true. We need lights, we need the bulbs replaced. Three years ago, we were allocated funds to purchase two roll-down doors, one for the concession, one for the press box. They both came in, the one was put in for the press box, I mean, for the concession, it was not put in for the press box. Homeless people are living there. We went in on yesterday, there were needles, there were condoms, it was terrible, there was feces, they are living there. This is a city liability, and it's a youth sports liability. The youth sport leagues are required to have a lease, liability insurance, and police. But the soccer league is out there on Sunday, they have taken over the park, you can't even rent the pavilion. They don't have a lease, they don't have insurance, they don't have police. Youth sports have to pay $50 per hour, per officer. We can't afford it. The coaches are putting their money together to try to pay these officers. The police department has a budget. That money should come from the budget. If we need a model, Bessemer has the perfect model. If the Marvel City can do it, surely the city of Birmingham can. I have several more issues, so I'll come back next week, and I'll have those issues. But I want to thank Council O'Quinn, he's right there with us in these meetings. We have not gotten any answers.
President O'Quinn, can we make a motion for her to have an additional few minutes to finish?
Sure.
So I move for, was it additional, three minutes?
This is pending the rules.
Yeah.
All in favor, let it be done by saying aye.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the lights. Those poles were donated. I went out and secured that money for those poles in 2007. We secured the money for the lighting, so the city didn't even have to pay for it. All they were required to do was to replace the light bulbs. I need your help to get those light bulbs replaced. The windscreen that was purchased out of Marcel's money, we were told that the money had to come through the city because it's city property, and anything that went on that property had to come to the city. We were told those windscreens would be brought out at the beginning of every year, put on the fence, at the end of the year, it would be removed and housed by the city, which was a win-win for us. Last year, when they brought the windscreen, they dumped it in the parking lot and left. We didn't know, we weren't notified. A coach just happened to be driving through, the windscreen was gone because the homeless had taken it, and that's what they were using for their bedding in the press box and the concession stand. So we don't, we can't even say that the money was spent for the windscreen because we don't have it. So when you look at a block and sled, y'all are, I'm sure football people, we're talking about less than $10,000, so where is the other $90,000? We need answers. Where is that money? Nine years later. It was designated, to give you a point, the one thing that he asked for, his mother died when he was a junior at the University of Alabama. The one item he wanted out of that money was a small circle of asphalt. He wanted a flag pole with the United States flag, and he wanted a bench in memory of his mother, and that hasn't been done, nine years later. We got a problem. $50 per officer. Those officers don't make $50 in their regular role as a police officer, but we're price gouging our youth sports organizations. We are the only city in the metroplex that charges youth sports for a police officer. No other city charges, they are provided by the city. Our police have a big budget, we understand that they're short-staffed. We're only talking about six locations on a Saturday, six officers. $50 per officer, per hour, youth sports. We can do better as a city. I am here to ask for your help. Those are my items for today, and I thank you for your time.
Council Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Jones, number one, I just want to say thank you for coming up here and sharing your concerns with the full council, and thank you for working with Council O'Quinn on this. This is not something that, you know, we are not aware of, and that, you know, we are not, you know, working on. As a matter of fact, today, at our Community Development Committee meeting, the only agenda item we have is Park and Rec coming to us, sharing with us updates and timelines and statuses of different parks, recreation centers, as well as pools in our districts that, you know, are being repaired, because there are several people who have questions, just like you, about where we are in terms of renovating these things, updating these things, and just trying to make sure that we can get the utilization that we need. And so I just want to say again, thank you for your, for expressing your concerns to us, but I know I have full confidence in this council, as well as the Park and Rec Board, that we will address those issues for you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones, I wanted to let you know that after our conversation yesterday, I spoke with Mayor Woodfin, and he's going to be convening, I think myself, Council Moore as Chair of our Community Development Committee and Chair of the Park Board, Mr. Walter Body, to have further discussion specifically about Wauhoma Park and, and to hopefully, you know, get us on a pathway to addressing these issues. Pro Tem Alexander, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Jones, for bringing these issues before us. I did want to ask the chiefs, we have a similar problem in Hilton Park with someone actually living in the park, and so what we've been told with the recent state legislation of squatters and people in, of property trespassing, that there was a wait in this baby back to the park board. There was signage that needed to be put up just saying that the park, you know, after dark, you can't be in the park. And so I just wondered, how is that affecting other parks, or where are we with that? I did escalate that to y'all's attention yesterday, but you may not have had opportunity to read that, but this just sort of hit home with what's going on in some other parks.
Yes, ma'am. So, Madam Pro Tem, the, the item that you just escalated, it hasn't made its way to us. I'm assuming that you sent it to the G A team?
Yes.
So they'll advance that to us?
And it was actually bundled with some other homes in that area that we're having problems with, but, so I just wanted to kind of put it on the radar that this isn't something that's just unique to Wauhoma, dealing with these people that are trespassing and actually living in our parks.
So there's a, there's a much more global effort, especially since the legislation has passed that we're doing with both our Government Affairs Team, our Office of the City Attorney, our Birmingham Police Department, and our Code Enforcement Teams, so we'll be providing that, so it's good to know, because we're tracking all of those as they come up. And thank you for noting, Mr. President, that Mayor Woodfin has already had the discussion. Ms. Jones, I'd like to get, if you could, just share the synopsis of everything that you've just given to the council from a staff perspective. I'll make sure you have my contact information so we can walk down the staffing operational issues as, as our city leadership meet with you all as well.
Okay, no problem. To Pro Tem, our issue is not that they're living in the park, they're living in the building. We have the door, we don't know where it is. We need the park board to locate that door and install it. They did one, and it got them out of there, so we can just get that door installed, that gets them out of the park. But again, I do thank you for your time.
Ms. Clark, next speaker, please.
Uh, well, Jenkins, 1105 Southwood Drive, Birmingham, Alabama. I'd like to say to the council that we had our 50-year class reunion in 1973. We got a trophy for the, the Alumni Association gave me a trophy. Everybody got one. We celebrate our 50-year, I did every year, the Civil Rights Number Two, new car, the old car. I just wish they'd do something for the Collegeville, you know, car. I wish they fixed it up or something, you know, do something to it, you know, the old car, the new car. I mean, the new car looked nice. We toured the new school, the car, but we getting ready to have our class reunion this year, Carver High School, this year. And then also, we had a wonderful time, Miss Anderson, at Alabama, at the Fairfield Civic Center. I just want to let you know what's a wonderful. Huh? Bessman, uh huh, had a wonderful time. Alumni, we got a chance to, got a chance to come over there, and it was real nice, and Miss Bay was all over there. I just want to say everything was real nice. I enjoyed myself, alumni. We go around, people invite us, and we just go around, and I want a clock. You know, they called it, I didn't, I look at my number, I want a clock. Uh huh, I want a clock. And I just want to let y'all know that our pastor, Reverend Irving, we let y'all come out and visit my church. We got a new pastor from Oak Street Baptist Church, and he will be preaching at any of y'all Baptist church this coming Sunday at 3 o'clock. And also, my appreciation will be next year. I just talked to Tyson, he said he gonna have it next year. So I want to let y'all know, I don't know what day it's gonna be, but I'm gonna try to find out what day it's gonna be so I can let y'all know they gonna have an appreciation in next year, but I don't know what day. And also, we gonna have a reunion first week in October in North Birmingham Park, where all of y'all to come to picnic, the first Saturday in October, North Birmingham Park. And also, Marie, well, she had a nice homecoming, yeah, she had a nice homecoming. I'm a real miss because she was faithful to our church, Oak Street, and a lot of churches. She, you know, she tends to pay Oak Street, but what I'm saying, the movement church. She started from movement church and moved on, and so it was well-attended, and it was revolution, it was well-attended. Marie, she, you know, she was real nice and everything. Her pastor said her daughter is sick, so y'all pray for her daughter, Ray Sean pray for her, and hope she be all right. But I, I just want to let you know that it's, everything coming up, reunion coming up, and, and also, the men of praise, we gonna get back together. Well, we went to, well, I didn't get a chance to go, I went to Reverend Horton Church this Sunday, they went to Gaston this Sunday, but I still want y'all to come check us out, but we be, we be saying down, you know, we be, we be, we be going on, and Mr. Moore still want to get you that letter, Cass, Ms. Gil, they getting ready for their reunion, and need a letter for their reunion, she want a letter for the class reunion this year, you know. And that is, that's all I like to say, and I, I just want to say, you know, we had a nice time, and Fairfield Bessman had a nice time over there, and also, you know, that's all I would like to say, y'all pray for us, and our Carver High School alumni, we traveled going on for this reunion, and going on for the class reunion, and we'll have a wonderful time, and I will let y'all know about the appreciation. It'll be, well, I just talked to him on the phone from Mexico, he said he has so many things to come up, so he said it to next year, but I don't know what date, but I will let y'all know next year when it gonna be. Come out and visit my church sometime, Oak Street Baptist Church, the new pastor, First Lady, Miss Irving, and I like, we love our new pastor, our First Lady. They come from Bessman, Reverend Connor, our old pastor, he retired, but he is great, you know, he is good, and he said he gonna walk to any of y'all Baptist church this Sunday, and Collegeville, the church right down the street, so all of us gonna walk down the street, any of y'all church can be preaching, so let y'all to come.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. And you brought up alumni, I want to tell you, it's We Know the High School Alumni Week, we got a big billboard, hey, hey! So listen, I just want to tell all my fellow We Know alums, we just need to pace ourselves this week, it's a little bit like classic, but let's just stay hydrated, stay rested up, and we'll make it through to Saturday. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Yeah, these, these alumni weeks for high school are like a serious deal. Chiefs, I wanted to give you an update. So we've got an update from council administrator regarding planning for a retreat, and the date that we're looking at is Monday, September 30th, and we can provide additional details for you guys on times and location, but that's, that's the date we're working with currently. Want to thank our officers on duty. As always, we have Officer Pinkard based here in City Hall, we also have from North Precinct, Officer Coleman and Officer Sampson. Thank you for being here with, with us this morning. With that, I believe we've covered all of our items of business. Council Williams?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Excited that Dr. Love and his staff present this for the families, they get to know the teachers, have an open house, get some familiarity with the school and the layout and the programs that they have here. We're having our Back to School Bash, which we have every year, and this year, we're having food trucks, DJs, and you get an opportunity to meet the teachers.
We felt that we would take this opportunity to introduce our house model, which we try to build culture and climate within our building, and not only that, but we try to make sure that students have a great time when they come to school, they have bounce houses, food truck, they able to actually get on the 360 photo booth, and they able to go around and pick up information from teachers, and also, we're sending an activity home so they can get involved with students before returning back to school. And so we want to make sure that they're able to come in and be ready on day one.
I'm a big workforce development hero, and I love wanting to get our children where they can excel in life, and of course, that's through a quality education. And I know this is the footstool, this is the stepping stone of how they'll progress through middle school and high school. So again, education, it means so much to our children, and we know what it can mean for their future.
We hope to accomplish meeting all of the parents, filling them in on different opportunities and things that we have here at Oxmore Valley, such as the house system. We want to get to know our scholars before the day of school so that we can have a perfect start.
I'm very excited about the turnout this evening, which our turnout is always great, but our parents seem like they're ready to come back to school, our students really seem like they're ready to come back to school. And I just also have this mantra that we have every year of moving from good to great, and this year, we're going to move from good to great to even better. And of course, you know, our district representative is always here for us. And of course, you know, our district representative is always here for us. And we're excited about that. District Seven is the best district.
Have a wonderful school year. I want you to be ready day one, and I want you to have a great, successful time. Everyone here at Birmingham City Schools, we want you to be college or career ready. And this is how you start that pathway.